A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the ability to meet and discuss the county's interests and their desires, and we ask that everything that we do today be pleasing to you and Jesus Christ's. Do you mind?
First up is approval minutes from our April 9 meeting. I assume you all got copies in red and there's a table should go through.
Second.
Great. Any corrections, additions, or questions? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Aye. Any public comment on any of the agenda items we have today? See, we're writing little numbers. We've got reimbursement from the jail. Give this money back to the area.
The 683 rates reimbursement from DOC from housing, there are inmates and just medical costs we've incurred during that.
Okay. You going to take a motion to approve this? No? Any, second?
Second.
Gary? Any questions? I will. So are we, how's the bridge in DOC?
I think yesterday we had a total of 23. And two more that should be with the actual county personnel. So 25 total, but yeah.
Okay. Did we give, how much per day?
It's currently 35. July 1, it'll go up to 37.50 per day. Not worth it. I'd like to take it to DOC today if I could.
I hear you. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the 50,000 for the county administrator's position. And probably Gary that he could, he could direct this conversation. Gary?
Okay, we've been talking about this for a little while, Jim and I had. The idea being that we've got a $12 million budget plus various other budgets that we're working with and it's technically it's all done with 10 part-time people. And there's just a lot of things that need to get done, that we're hiring professional people, nothing against you two gentlemen, value, education, knowledge is helpful, but engineering fees, legal fees, those kind of things running into the financial consultants, running into the tens if not hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. And some of this stuff can be done by a full-time person, but that's their job to do. The council needs help with looking into these budgets, so we got budgets busting at the seams and we need some eyes to look at it. And so we put together, and I think we shared that job description and ordinance and this, and this would start this in July for this year. There's a couple of things yet that I would like to see on this, and I want to make those comments first and then open up for discussion. One of the things was that I was wanting to see in the ordinance that it would be subject to an annual funding each and every year. Secondly, I know yours might have over, must have been me. It has to be revenue neutral. And in order for that to be revenue neutral, I think we need to see something that's actually been reduced, line item. Not quite as concerned about that personally for this year, but for the 2020 budget. I had recommended Q bridge be reduced. That's a, you know, it's kind of a target because, I don't know if everybody knows what the Q bridge fund is, cumulative, we collect tax revenue, the commissioners set that rate. It's been set at .075, and that money goes into that fund to rebuild bridges and approaches and, you know, it's just a cumulative fund that we build up because the county's responsible for every bridge, it's in the county. It's not that they spend it every year, but there's real need for bridge repairs, I'm not making light of that. But every dollar that goes into that bridge, Q bridge fund, is a dollar that the general fund doesn't have access to for day-to-day business. There are the things. So my idea was will we back that off for 2020 to compensate for the cost of this position? And then we have time to really see, is this position going to be revenue neutral, is it going to be a positive financially to the county? If not, we deal away with it. And I mean, those are my goals for, so that's what it's all about.
I guess we can open it up for discussion.
Gary, I've got a couple of questions.
Mike, please.
Linda, there it is. I can hear myself. Do we have other counties of our size that have this position, population-wise or employee-wise? I understand some of the coordination and things, but coming from the educational side where we used to get beat up adding a layer of administration and all that out there, I'm just always cognizant of that and caring about that, but I can see a need for the position, but just wondering where other counties are similar in our size or population? Do we now, or towns or anything?
Tom, I don't know the exact number of counties that have them, because it's kind of a new thing that's allowed by statute now, but Hidors County just had one county administrator for some time. They had one, then they didn't like them, and they government, and they hired somebody new. But Mr. Graham is their county administrator, I deal with him a little bit. But they're the closest county that has one. There are many others, but the concept really arose out of the town and city structure. They've had municipal managers for 25, 30 years, and that's very common. And this, counties are kind of just coming, just been authorized to do it in the last three years, so you don't see a lot of that, but that's, it's kind of a new, new concept in Indiana nationally, it's very common, and I did, I do have reports that shows how many counties in the United States have them, it's thousands of them. So, but it's kind of new here. Like Hidors County would be the closest county they have.
Oh, they're a lot larger than we are, but...
Yeah, they are, yeah.
What kind of qualifications are we looking for in this person? Do we have that yet, or you said you had the job description, but do we have certain qualifications we're looking for for the person?
Did you get it copied?
No, that's why I may be asking, a lot of questions are already out there, I've just not seen anything on it until it's all the agendas.
Yeah, it was on the job description.
So you didn't need that last night? So, yesterday, early?
Okay.
Tom, the job description says that a candidate for this position should either have a degree, you can get a degree in municipal management most prominently in Indiana from IU School of Public and Environmental Affairs, that a master's degree would be helpful, or you have experience in public sector administration.
You were talking about having this position in July potentially, or as quickly, is there a timeline for the hiring or advertising the position?
We have to do appropriation, additional appropriations, so that takes, Jennifer, how long does that take? Is that 30 days, 60 days?
If you decide it today, we'll do the additional for the June meeting.
Which, kind of, then...
I mean, I've already advertised it for today's meeting, if you do that. If you decided to agree to it today, then the appropriation would already be there.
So, July was kind of a timetable, but, yeah, there's, there's a bit of a lead time to get that done.
Right. Okay. And I assume this position, and this may be on the job description, that would report to the commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, clearly the, Dan, clearly that this position works at the pleasure of the commissioners. However, the job description points out that budget, annual budget is one of the position's responsibility. There is some other verbiage about, do some research and investigations.
The energy process.
Oh, yeah, we're also, there was some discussion back and forth as to how we arrived at this person, and so there's going to be two council members on board to review the applicants, as well as, I assume, probably for admissions. So we have an input in who's going to be in that position. And I still want that verbiage in there, that it's approved annually as well as funding this budget, we also have that responsibility each year. So, the commissioners have, they've had, they've come a long way and wanted to work with the council to make this work for the county. And for me, I'm going to tell you, for me, it's definitely a six-month trial, but you were probably an 18-month trial period, and if it's not what we anticipated, I think it should go away.
That was my next question on the, I see that the process of interviewing and that, so I appreciate your time, thank you.
I am in favor of this position because I see our county like running, you visualize a business running without a CEO. I mean, we have three very hardworking, well-able commissioners who have full-time jobs to support their life, and, you know, the commissioner job is basically a public service job that they have to do in their part-time. There's a lot of money and a lot of important decisions that have to be made with part-time people. So I think that it just makes sense to have a, basically a sort of a CEO over the entire entity. I see them as being an arbitrator between the council and the commissioners, which would be beneficial most of the time, and someone to oversee the budget above and beyond our capabilities, and I think that's important. As long as it is budget neutral, as you stated, and annually budgeted to where if it was not beneficial, at any time in the future, that the council could remove that position. I think that it's a good thing for what everybody's worked on to put this together.
Just a quick comment, I had, and I had got your email last night, so I had reviewed it. Part of it was confusing, not exactly the position, but I do, I feel that it's definitely could be a good possibility and could end up saving us money, so it costs us money. But I also had a question Tom did about other other counties that have this position, which has been answered now. And I guess I feel a little bit about it, that you're stating that this is a trial-type position, because, you know, if it works, we continue on with it. But I also know that we've got public defender back there that's asked for two more positions that we can't seem to come up with, and there's demand for them to work with. So, you know, we're going to catch the static in creating this position and letting it be needed, that we could build positions for other counties. So, at the end, if it shows it saves us money, then there shouldn't be an argument about it. And I do, I'm not against it, I do think it's probably something we need, and knowing that it's kind of on a trial-type basis, we'll find out whether we do or not, I guess. So, that's my only comments.
Anybody else? Have the commissioners agreed to the Q bridge adjustment to, or some other adjustment?
Actually, unless you share that, I have not. I don't believe it's been shared yet, Mark. I think what Gary and I talked about, I don't think would be out of reason, a .75 down to a .70. Gary's estimation was a hundred thousand dollars there if you do that. I think we could probably still make that work. We do have some stuff going on, as you heard at the commissioners' meeting, we're going to be tapping out here and there, and the fact that we came off of two years of nothing going into it too, is what we've got to be careful of. But I think that if we're talking about just the half cent for the next year, for the 2020 year, to see how this works, you know, we could probably work with that. And I'll have to incommunicate that and email to the other two today, and, but I don't think anybody's going to have too much of a problem with that.
And that's without jeopardizing bridge repairs and...
Yeah, and we'll make sure of that. We just had, John had just sat down not too long ago with Jeff Peters, and they started doing the budgeting stuff for the highway, trying to be proactive for 2020, and so I know Jeff gave a lot of advice, so I'm sure that we'll run that back through Jeff, obviously, rather than just our calculations.
Gary mentioned maybe saving on professional fees. Do you think that's a real possibility, Gary?
To save on professional fees? Absolutely, absolutely. Because we got any, from the council's page, if we've got anything that needs to be looked into, checked out during the day, on your job, or not, you know, or, and to do those kind of, do that very much of that, it gets in a lot more time than what we're already doing, and you end up saying, Rob, can you figure this out? Can Jeff Peters look into this? Or can HWC look into this? And those folks all are hitting the county for 150 to 200, oh, 200 dollars. So that becomes hundreds of thousands of dollars over the course of the year, or you don't do it, which stifles progress on things that need to get done. So, from that vantage, yes, this person would be full-time to be able to do those kind of things. And I think we should see professional fees overall reduced, and, you know, if that happens. We've got some really budget issues that are in front of us. We're, we've got some real challenges ahead, and it's going to take some, a lot of work to work through them. You know, the easy thing for the council to do is to know what is race pack. That's the easy thing to do, and then it's a problem solved and go to home. But that's not the solution for me. The solution is to figure out why we're not, the tax rate isn't growing at the race, the tax revenue isn't growing at the rates we have. You know, and women need to make those kind of things happen. Where we spend too much money that's not really benefiting, you know, the county. And all those things take a lot of time to look into. The auditor's office is overwhelmed with HR issues and medical insurance issues, which is really not the auditor's job. And we have excellent medical insurance for the county employees, but I don't think very many of the employees understand how it works. And so when they don't understand how it works, it's not any good. Well, it's excellent. We have a clinic out there that you can get most, everything day-to-day needs, health-wise, done for no additional cost. You have people that are available by phone or email to set up appointments for you, or it's the cheapest thing around, they do all that service for you. So those things are all available, and I think a lot of the employees understand how it works, and you need somebody that's time, you have your employee that understands, or have some go-to person that can explain it for you. Those are all the kinds of things that need to be done in the county, and we're missing, we're missing out on a lot of that.
Good to hear. Thank you, Tom. Gary, just quickly, I want to retract the statement where I said they would be like a CEO, they would not be over the commissioners, it would be more like a COO position, where they would be in charge of operations, not, this is obviously a higher position, not a collective position, so I just want to make that clear, that I wasn't saying is this person being bizarre of the county, but, or a head of operation. Thanks for clearing that up. I was thinking cave in the county, or...
I just want to say, Tom, you had some good questions. Gary and I met with Dan and Jim last week, and had a lot of those same questions. And, you know, as an advocate for the council, of course, I want to advise the council what I feel likes in the best interest of their position. And it hasn't been portrayed as a position that will be, it'll look for efficiency, this person looks for efficiency in the county, and hopefully in the pain for themselves by bearing out expenditures that are unnecessary, things like that, helping department heads and whatnot. But having said that, to be sure, like you said, it's created another level. And, you know, in my opinion, usually government expands and has a hard time retracting in the future. So it's something I'm very cautious about, and, you know, to be sure, once it's in, it's in, and you've really got to be vigilant as to whether or not it continues to go on on an annual basis. And I think it'd be difficult to have it in place for five to 10 years and then say, okay, now we're not going to have that department. You need to really think about it annually, whether we really need to have this or not. Because as time goes, it's going to become bigger potentially, and, you know, at this point, this person would work before you, but at some point, they theoretically could have another secretary or assistant, then you're going to have equipment and vehicles, you never know. I mean, you know, it could expand pretty rapidly. But if it's paying for itself and it's, and it's hope in the county, then maybe it's worth it. You had some good questions.
I guess one thing that I did really understand is the, how the duties are going to be split up between the commissioners and the council, as far as if we need to forward it, if we need to forward it, do we get the plus seat of commissioners, we ask this person, or do we need this?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I mean, I really think that, truthfully, if you, if you get this position filled with somebody that's got the abilities to do it, it's going to flow, it's not going to have to be, I mean, you know, we all know that June, July, August, September, you know, kind of the budget time, and not necessarily all that time, but that's going to be the busy time in and out as far as trying to get budgets ready for the next year, things like that. But, you know, I think we just got to remember that this position will have a schedule just like the auditor has a schedule on a daily basis or anybody else, and it might not just be the thing that you can call and say, hey, I need you right now to come do this, but I don't think there's going to be a problem as far as, you know, the interaction of each other. I think we're all in for the same goal, and that's obviously the efficiency and the saving of money, and also to be beneficial for productivity and things. You know, like Gary talked, and one thing we talked about forever is, Jen is just crazy and the auditor's off, not, I don't mean crazy, sorry, that is, that office is just crazy, and, you know, and insurance, HR stuff, and, you know, she's, she's always, that office is always taken care of, but there's so much more that's going on in there that can be beneficial as far as, you know, helping with reports, helping with budgets, helping with anything that anybody else needs, that you get a couple of things out from under that. But I think everything, once this position's established, the person gets comfortable, I think it'll flow just like water, so.
And since you brought me into the conversation, I don't, I haven't really taken the time to look too closely at the job description, but one way this can, and I've said it a million times, and I'm going to keep saying it, one way this county could save so much money is have central supply or centralized ordering. I mean, it, it might be logistically difficult in the beginning, but in the long run, that's going to save you so much money, so much. So, I don't know, might someday consider making that part of the position.
Terry Allen, just to follow what Jim answered your question, I worked with Gary and Rob, we did add a couple of things to the job description, really to your point. One is that a specific part of the job is for this person to assist the council with budget. We also added that they would report to you monthly on budget status, appropriations versus expenditures. So again, Gary had some good points about how, on a regular basis, this person could work and serve and provide information, analysis to you guys in order to give you good information. So that person would be able to take reports from the auditor and do some analysis for you, and you guys, at least under the current job description, would expect to report at every meeting you have about where are we here today, where are we, and sometimes that is difficult to do with all the different budgets. We think of general fund, but I know you guys know, you have 27 different funds you deal with, so that, we did add that as part of our dialogue. We, that arose and that has been added into the job script, and specifically a reporting duty to you guys, assistance with budget, and then how, you know, anything else that you need. And so that was part of the dialogue, and Gary's curious to drink water, and so we've added those things.
Guys, what's your pleasure on this today? I mean, Greg had a very good point about, you know, money is needed in several different places, so we got, we, we kind of justify this, and where is this money coming from?
The commissioners tabled this from the last meeting, right?
We tabled it again yesterday. Due to the timing of the changes and everything coming out, I'm not much in favor of filling things in and trying to rush it through, and people don't understand it.
So, Jennifer, in form of my additional appropriations, we can approve this, Jim, still being, if we already started in July, right?
Yeah.
And I, I would recommend that we have added to this, so we can have a fund, annual funding, I want something funded by commissioners, that they will definitely make it revenue neutral. You know, to say we're going to take, we're going to reduce legal fees or professional fees by 50,000 dollars is, doesn't say, because it's an arbitrary number. But to say you're going to reduce the Q bridge rate from 0.75 to .07, has real teeth. It says, we're not going to accumulate that much revenue into that fund, so we have it for something else, and that's tangible. So, I really need that, and one of the other things I recommend is, in the ordinance... So, I really need that, and one of the other things I recommend is, in the ordinance, under other, I think it needs to include the council, and just to make it clear, you know, get that to it. Number nine, assist perform other duties, studies, investigations, and analysis requested by the county commissioners, I think it needs to include the council. It's a joint effort, and so I'd like to see that. So that's basically three things I'd like to see in there. I'd like to see the commissioners approve this, this, and put the regulation in, and ordinance in, and the job script together, and then, they're happy with it, and we, I think that's the, I think that's the right order that should go in, because right now, we would be approving funding for a job that we don't really know what the description is for sure, or what the ordinance are going to be saying, other than what's there to do. So I guess that would be a table until June, but I'm really optimistic about this, I think, you know, this is a good program, it's a good, I'm going to call it a pilot program for the county, and, so, I understand, if we don't see clear, obvious results, if this is saving money for county money, to doing a real service for the county, we ditch it, and we deal with it, that's my position.
Do we need a motion to table, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And I agree, partly for my own, not being up to speed as much as I'd like to, but it sounds like we need some more clarification, everybody wants a little bit more information on this, but I'll make a motion to table this till the June county council meeting.
Donald Mills, I agree. Yeah, and I apologize for getting this out to you at 10 after 6:00 last night, but that was basically when I got up to move on, and I'm like you, I don't want to keep, do something that we're not all familiar with, and just crest the burden, like, you know.
Well, it's adding a position, we've just had it come through a large taxing grease, so, I mean, anything out here, I just feel like I wouldn't be able to argue with my constituents why this is needed, and be able to just, they may not agree, but at least have some teeth behind me in some things like that, so. And I'm, like I said, I'm not against it, I just want to know what I'm doing, I know when I was in the school business, I had to verify everybody I could hire or whatever, so, I feel it's pretty much the same thing, I'm dealing with public money.
Right, and I don't want to pass it so we can read it and see what's in it.
Two quick questions, Terry, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Just clarify this, so the .70 would be for the 2020 year, to make sure we're understanding that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. Dan will send that out today, get that communicated out, and then, I mean, Gary, I don't have any problem with putting the, subject to annual funding in there, but to me, everything that we do is subject to annual funding.